Good morning. Today is July 11, 2022. Regular session of the Sangunian Bayan of Santa El Loco Sur. Before we begin our regular session, I'd like to request everyone to please put on your masks, put your phones in silent mode so as not to disrupt the proceedings of this regular session. This session is called Order. Sangunian Bayan member Clay Formoso will lead us in a prayer.
Let's bow our head and clear the presence of our Lord, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Lovingly heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help us as we gather together. We pray for your guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen. Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Panunupan ng katapatan sa watawat ng Pilipinas. Ako ay Pilipino, buong katapatang nanunupas sa watawat ng Pilipinas at sa bansang kanyang sinasagisag na may dangal, katarungan, at kalayaan. Na pinakikilos ang sambayan ng maka Diyos, maka kakasasan, maka tao, at maka bansa.
We dispense with the roll call considering that all members of the Sangunian Bayan are present today, so we have the required number. We can proceed with our regular session. First is the reading and approval of the minutes of the previous session. The members of the Sangunian Bayan were given copies of the minutes. If there are any corrections to be made, please say so. If none, what's the pleasure of the Sangunian Bayan? So, we have six pages.
Mr. Presiding Officer.
SBM Borja, you are recognized.
Motion to adopt and approve our previous regular minutes of the previous session dated July 4, 2022 at 9:28 o'clock in the morning.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Motion you responded. The minutes of the previous session is hereby adopted and approved. Next, we go to the privilege hour. Do we have any member of the Sangunian Bayan who would like to take the floor to raise a matter of privilege?
Sure, President.
SBM Biliones, you are recognized.
Good morning to everybody. A pleasant and blessed...
May I request the good SBM to please occupy the podium?
A pleasant and blessed morning to each and everyone. It is indeed a great honor and privilege to be standing here humble and me. Allow me to express my sincerest thanks to all of you, the support that you have given to innovates like me in the field of politics matters a lot. I will never be in place to take the lead without your outpouring love and with that, I am inspired to serve with a heart. I will never break the trust. I can say that I am no more than willing and ready to be a leader in action. When I was younger, my parents taught me to confer lofty regards to every people. I come along with seeing a glow up in a family that pays high respect to elders. I am becoming more conscious of their beliefs, especially now that I am in public service. I am beginning to grasp that respect and regard to them should be limited to the care and attention that we give them, should be limited to the care and attention that we give, but to them should be limited to the care and attention that we give, but to make sure that they will be given the rights and exercise their privileges that the law accorded to them, which they rightfully describe. As one of the members of the senior citizens, and it is justifiable that our bodies become more prone to the different diseases and illness, as such, more of the senior citizens of our local municipality are ailing. I can say that their need of medical support escalates in response to this and with the growing needs to the elder, particularly the senior citizens, the government, and a Ted Republic Number 9994, otherwise known as Expanded Senior Citizens Act of 2010. As the Jefferson Committee of for senior citizens and with the continuous support of the body, we will see to it that all the senior citizens will receive fairly, fairly, that what they respectfully deserve. All of us are aiming for a common goal, that is reduce poverty and boosted economic growth. This could be only made possible if we boast our manpower to stand on their own and help them sustain a living. The Department of Social Welfare and the Development has led in the provisions of opportunities for income generating activities and livelihood development to the implementation of sustainable livelihood programs that aims to move highly vulnerable households in sustainable livelihood towards economic stability. The government is doing all the revenues to help the people and with that, all the people will work as one and do their part. Global competitiveness can be possible and attainable. With any team, unity, collaboration, and teamwork is very essential. It is what allows a team to run like this, that there only be one message. For without unity, any team is doomed for failure. So, this is the last of my privileges. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Sangunian Bayan member Purisima Biliones. So, the members of the Sangunian Bayan heard the privileged speech of Sangunian Bayan member Biliones, and we hope that you were able to take note of some of the points that she manifested in her speech. Before we continue, last week, I had the occasion of meeting the municipal nurse and the DOH representative of Santa, Ms. May Belardo, and we discussed the upcoming provincial integration or the provincial rollout of the universal healthcare in Ilocusur.
Kahit na sa akin apodato'y, kapujy decision iti mandanas akin dey universal healthcare nga lintay nga naipasa idi, ma-integrate wano agbalin nga may-maisan iti sistema, iti amin nga hospital ken RHU ti probinsya. Aduti may cat nga programa iti DOH pakiramanan da gitoy lifestyle medicines nga iti teda kadagiti at the high blood pressure na diabetes ken aglalok. Ketti may isa nga nagpapatangan, ketti dati panakaisimpa iti sistema tayo, tapno may integrate tay metlaeng iti provincial health system. Hanak nga aga agulbud na nagsen ken dakkel da'to'y nga karit. Tangamin, 2023 kas na kunakidina minsan, ketti expectaren tay tipanagbaba iti internal revenue allotment tayo when or the national tax allocation tayo. Ngam adumetay kasapulan nga simpain tayo, tapno ma-credit iti RHU tayo ken mairaman dey integration iti provincial health system. Isongarod nga maawis tayo amin, ya, no adada gitoy okasyon nga paayab iti probinsya nga panagdengeg ken panmakipartisipar iti diskusyon. Naibaga ni Mang May Tolentino nga tuno second week iti August, iti paayab iti province, tapno mapagpapatangan iti probinsya ken da gitoy mayores dati plano iti rollout iti universal healthcare ken ito integration dito probinsya tay nga Ilocusur. Ado, aputi masapul tey ngaramiden. Ken malaksidireta kita na urin na kunatay nga hantay nga create iti position. Ngam gaputa romuar nga may sang requirement iti integration ken accreditation dey RHU tayo, ketti dati panakakreate iti mesu ngam municipal epidemiological surveillance officer, it's a mouthful. I already asked the budget officer to make the computation. So, hopefully, we can accomplish all of the requirements. Aside from complying with all the documentary requirements, it's important that we can really comply with our obligation to deliver affordable or quality public health services to our constituents. So, thank you very much, Sangunian Bayan member Biliones. Yes, Sangunian Bayan Formoso?
Ah, kun ano, adai bagam kami.
Okay, we proceed then to our next item. The first reading and referral to the committees concerned of proposed ordinances, resolutions, communications, petitions, messages, and memorials. First item, Madam Secretary.
A resolution earnestly requesting the office of the provincial governor, Honorable Jeremias Jerry Singson, Vicencity Ilocusur, two garbage trucks to augment existing unit in the municipality of Santa Ilocusur.
The matter shall be referred to the committee on environment. Next.
A resolution earnestly requesting the office of Congresswoman Honorable Christine Singson Mihang, Second District of Ilocusur, two garbage trucks to augment existing unit in the municipality of Santa Ilocusur.
Same matter shall be referred to the committee on environment. Next.
A resolution earnestly requesting Director Paula Paz M. Sidiongo, MDMPH Ceso IV, Director IV of the Department of Health Center for Health Center for the provision of sea ambulance equipment and medical supplies in the municipality of Santa Ilocusur.
The matter shall be referred to the committee on health.
A resolution earnestly or a resolution authorizing Honorable Jesus B. Bueno Jr., Local Chief Executive, and Ms. Ruena P. De Peralta, LT001, Acting Municipal Treasurer, to engage in a business relationship with banks and hereby authorizing them as signatories in behalf of the local government unit of Santa Ilocusur.
The matter shall be referred to the committee on finance.
A resolution earnestly requesting the governor, Province of Ilocusur, Honorable Jeremias Jerry Singson, to allocate funds from the RA 7171 Fund for the construction of concrete fences and purchase of armchairs for the Santa National High School at Marcos District, Santa Ilocusur, authored by SBM Encarnita Bidala Cueva and SBM Domingo El Ritoa.
The matter shall be referred to the committee on infrastructure.
A resolution earnestly requesting the office of Congresswoman Honorable Christine Singson Mihang, Second District of Ilocusur, to allocate funds for the construction of concrete fences and purchase of armchairs for the Santa National High School at Marcos District, Santa Ilocusur, author SBM Encarnita Bidala Cueva and SBM David Biado.
The matter shall be referred to the committee on infrastructure.
Mr. Presiding Officer, may I have the floor?
Yes, Sangunian, Sangunian Bayan Domingo Ritoa.
May I request four, five minutes recess, Mr. Presiding Officer?
Five minutes recesses. To give opportunity to the committees to discuss.
Jesus B. Bueno Jr. and Ms. Ruena De Peralta, our acting municipal treasurer, to engage in a business relationship with banks and and hereby authorizing them as signatories in behalf of the local government unit of Santa. And is there any visitor verification for this? Yes, Sangunian Borgonyo?
I believe, Mr. Chair, that there's a need to authorize Ms. Ruena De Peralta, Acting Municipal Treasurer, to engage in business relationship with banks. And I believe that this is important, relevant, not to delay any transaction, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Sangunian Borgonyo. Sangunian Borgonyo approves, hey, motion to, there's a motion to approve our committee hearing, it is a resolution. There is a good motion, Mr. Chair. So, the committee, the committee on of finance approve in the committee hearing, the resolution. So, the committee hearing adjourn. The item E and F, considering the, for the committee on infrastructure, may we know from the good Consular from Sakuya, the Chairman of Education?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During or after the, the first moving up ceremony of the Santa National High School last July 1, 2022, being the guest speaker, after, after the ceremony, I had a conversation with the OIC in the person of Mr. Arceyo and the PTA president, and I asked for, for updates with regards to our school. And they told me that armchairs are badly needed, the Santa, Santa National High School, because for this upcoming enrollment. Umadadugaminti enrolisen, Mr. Chair. And I asked them if the school have already fences, but unfortunately, they told me that there are no fences at all. So, I believe that we need to, to ask for financial funds for the construction of these concrete fences, the Santa National High School, Mr. Chair.
Thank you from the good Chairman of Education. May we know from the other members if they agree? The members of the infrastructure or the public works and highways, the Vice Chairman, Honorable Eugene Borja, Member, Honorable Benedict Clay Formoso, Honorable Encarnita De La Cueva, and Honorable Benedicto Borgonyo. The members of the... And the PPSK include for the committee. Will you unanimously agree, Mr. Chair, for the passage of the proposed measure? The committee hearing adjourn, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Since the committee hearings are done, I'd like to suspend our break and resume with our regular session. So, we now proceed to the presentation of committee reports. From our agenda, we have two items to be reported. Are the chairpersons ready to present their committee reports?
I have the floor, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Sangunian Bayan member Benedicto Borgonyo is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. July 18, 2022, committee report submitted by the committee of the whole, the subject of which is an administrative complaint filed by Elvira B. Harantilia, resident of Barangay Quezon, Santa El Loco Sur, against Ford C. Demeg, Barangay Kagawat of the same barangay. To the honorable presiding officers, Sangunian Bayan, Santa El Loco Sur, the committee of the whole, of which was constituted to conduct preliminary investigation on the matter, was held in separate dates on July 6, 2022, at 9:30 a.m. and July 8, 2022, at 9 o'clock a.m., respectively, with the presence of DILG Officer Marjorie Abaya and majority of the Sangunian Bayan members. Findings, A1, that copies of the complaint and its attachments were distributed to the attendees and given enough time for their perusal and appreciation. A2, that a notice to Mr. Ford Demeg was issued on June 6, 2022, requiring him to file a verified answer within 15 days upon receipt, of which Mr. Demeg received on June 7, 2022, a verified answer of which has not been received within the prescribed period. A3, that Mr. Demeg appeared in the SB office requesting for extension of his verified answer. The body, by a unanimous vote, decided to extend the filing, filing of his answer until the last hour on Thursday, July 7, 2022, provided that a medical certificate will be attached to said required answer. A4, that during the deliberation, the name of the complainant was overlooked, and it was only noticed after the deliberation that the name of the complainant, per verified complaint, is Elvira Harmilia. that the name of the complainant, per verified complaint, is Elvira Harmilia. Signatures of the complaint and non-certification of non-forum shopping, of which were affixed over the printed name. A5, that the body resumed in conducting the preliminary investigation on July 8, 2022, in appreciation of the verified answer by Mr. Demeg on the complaint. A6, that on the same date, the Committee of the Whole has decided on the administrative complaint based on the evidences presented, e.g., affidavit of the complainant and the counter affidavit of the complaint person and documents issued by other government agencies. Hence, has terminated the preliminary investigation. Recommendation, one is that the Committee of the Whole recommends to return the verified complaint and certificate of non-forum shopping of the complainant to make a corrective legal measure for her true identity. Secondly, that in view of the termination of the preliminary investigation, the Committee of the Whole shall submit its investigation or resolution. Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I respectfully recommend for the adoption and approval of the committee report submitted by the Committee of the Whole.
There is a motion from Sangunyan Bayan Member Benedicto Borgonio for the adoption and approval of the committee report pertaining to the findings and recommendations of the Committee of the Whole read the administrative complaint filed by Ms. Elvira Hantilia against Ford Demeg, Barangay Kagawat of Barangay Quezon, Santaylo, Kusor. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next is the committee report pertaining to, again, the application of Engineer Castañeda.
Then may I have the floor, Mr. Presiding Officer?
Yes, Sangunyan Borgonio.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the concerned barangay has yet to has no action yet on the matter at hand. Therefore, Mr. Presiding Officer, this humble representation moves that the matter be laid on the table on its third reading, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Okay, this is now the third time that we're going to lay on the table the proposed measure. Now, kindly inform the barangay concern that they need to comply with the ARTA, the Anti-Red tape, no? The applicant or the individual requesting for this endorsement from the Sangunyan Bayan should not be faulted for not submitting the requirements to the Sangunyan Bayan in case the barangay council cannot issue the necessary documents or requirements requested by the applicant. So kindly make the, with the district Consular, Sangunyan Bayan Member Borja kindly coordinate with the barangay officials of barangay Mabil Bilasur.
That, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Now we proceed to the presentation of other committee reports. Are the committee chairpersons ready to present their committee findings and recommendations?
Mr. Presiding Officer, may I have the
Sangunyan Bayan Member Borgonio, you may start.
On the two items, Mr. Presiding Officer, referred to the committee on environment and natural resources. While there is a need to augment our existing garbage truck and that we all know that the households will be benefited to the proposed measure, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move that the proposed measure be adopted and approved and that the proposed measure be calendered on its, for its second reading, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Motion is responded, the motion to adopt and approve the committee reports and that it be calendered for its second reading is hereby approved. Next, Committee on Health, Sangunyan Bayan Member Formoso.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. The Committee on Health had a brief discussion regarding the proposed measure, which referred to, which was referred to our committee. And the nature of the said resolution is beneficial and noble for its call. And with that, Mr. Presiding Officer, may I move for the approval of the proposed measure in its first reading? To be calendered to its second reading.
Second.
There is a favorable finding and recommendation on the Committee on Health on the two proposed measures referred to their committee. There's a motion now from Sangunyan Bayan Formoso to adopt and approve the committee report and that it be calendered for its second reading. Do I hear a second?
A second, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next.
Mr. Presiding Officer.
Sangunyan Bayan Member Borja, two measures referred to your committee. Ano, one measure?
Only one. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Our resolution, subject, our resolution authorizing Honorable Mayor Asus Bebeno Junior and our local Chief Executive and Ms. Rowena Deperalta, our acting municipal treasurer, to engage in a business relationship with banks and hereby authorizing them as signatories in behalf of the local government unit of Santa Ilocozo. During our recess, Mr. Presiding Officer, we discussed this proposed measure and the proposed measure, Mr. Presiding Officer. The Committee on Appropriation agree for the passage of this proposed measure. So there's no delayed business transaction of the LGU Santa Ilocozo. The committee recommends to adopt and approve this committee report, Mr. Presiding Officer, and the proposed measure to be calendered in its second reading.
There's a motion from Sangunyan Bayan Member Borja for the adoption and approval of the committee report and that the proposed measure be calendered for its second reading. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding.
We now proceed then to our calendar of business. So any items for second reading?
Mr. Presiding Officer, may I have the floor?
We still have one, I'm sorry. Sangunyan Bayan Member, yeah, the school, that two measures referred to your committee.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. After your recess, Mr. Presiding Officer, the Committee on Infrastructure convened a hearing. The committee agreed that the proposed measure is very beneficial, Mr. Presiding Officer. So therefore, Mr. Presiding Officer, I must request to this august body that the committee report must adopt and approve for the first reading and to be, the proposed measure to be calendered for second reading, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Okay, there is a motion from Sangunyan Bayan Member Litwa for the adoption and approval of the proposed measures submitted or referred to his committee and that those measures be calendered for second reading. Do I hear a second?
A second, Mr. Presiding.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, a motion is approved. Okay, uh, okay. I, I, I made a casual remark outside of the hall that most of the resolutions right now are request resolutions. It's because of the budget preparation season, no? And we hope that the good representative of the second district, Representative Christine Singson Mihang, will include these humble representations or humble requests in her annual budget proposals in the House of Representatives. But I hope we can consolidate all of our requests, no? Okay, now we proceed to our calendar of business. We have a number of measures calendered for second reading. And those are, I believe, request resolutions, no? Except for the measure referred to the Committee on Finance, which is, which is to authorize the municipal mayor and the municipal treasurer, no? So what's the pleasure of the Sangunyan Bayan?
The floor, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Sangunyan Bayan Member Borgonio, you may proceed.
While the two items or proposed measures, A and B, are mere requests, Mr. Presiding Officer, may I move for their approval on its second reading without passing the third and final reading, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing the second and no other discussion or objection to the motion of Sangunyan Bayan Borgonio, the motion is approved. Next, Sangunyan Bayan Formoso.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. It is the second reading of the proposed measure which was referred to the Committee on Health. It is essential for that our LGU C ambulance be properly equipped with addition of medical supplies and equipments to effectively respond to various untoward incidents. The members unanimously agreed for the approval of the proposed measure. And with that, Mr. Presiding Officer, may I move for the approval of the proposed measure in its second reading without passing its final inter reading, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Do I hear a second?
I second, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Motion is responded, the motion of Sangunyan Bayan Member Formoso to approve the passage of the two proposed measures is hereby approved. Next.
Mr. Presiding Officer.
Sangunyan Bayan Member Borja, you are recognized.
This time, Mr. Presiding Officer, is the second reading deliberation, interpretation of this proposed measure, Mr. Presiding Officer. Our resolution authorizing Honorable Mayor and our local Chief Executive and Ms. Rowena Deperalta, our acting municipal treasurer. There's no objection, Mr. Presiding Officer. I move that the proposed measure to be approved in its second reading and without passing in its third reading.
It's been moved and seconded that the proposed measure, our resolution authorizing the municipal mayor and the municipal, acting municipal treasurer to engage in a business relationship with banks be approved in its second reading without passing the third and final reading. Hearing objection, the motion is approved. Next, Sangunyan Bayan Litwa.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. The proposed measure under the Committee on Infrastructure, Mr. Presiding Officer, is already in the second reading. I move for the approval of the proposed measure in the second reading and without passing the third and final reading, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Do I hear a second? The motion is responded, the two measures referred to the Committee on Infrastructure requesting the good Congresswoman Christine Singson for funding of the construction of a request resolution to Governor Jerry Singson and Congresswoman Christine Singson for construction at the Santa National High School is approved without passing the third and final reading. We need to do that to comply with the requirement, no? I, I'm sure that you noticed that our lecturers for, in, in two separate occasions, our lecturers in the legislative training mentioned that for resolutions, it must pass at least two readings, at least two readings. I can't be lax on the rules of a resolution congratulating. We can pass that in one, in just one reading, no? But for other resolutions, I think we need to comply with the two reading requirement. Just to give some time to any member of the Sangunyan Bayan to probably change his or her mind, or maybe after the first reading and referral to the committee, he may, or she may have a better idea, no? To include in the resolution. So we have to comply with the two reading requirement of the resolution. Okay, now we're done with the presentation of committee reports, we're done with the second reading of the proposed measures referred to the various committees. Do we have any other item for consideration of the Sangunyan Bayan, Madam Sekretary?
None, Mr. Presiding Officer. No more, sir.
No more, thank you. Any announcements from the floor?
Uh, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Sangunyan Bayan Member David Biado, you are recognized.
Just only a reminder, sir. We, you mentioned before, sir, that we would conduct a session using our own direct ilokano version, when we will, using ilokano dialect, sir. When we will try to do this kind of session, sir.
Yes, that's very good, no? Thank you for reminding me, Sangunyan Bayan Member Biado. We will check the availability of the members of the Sangunyan Bayan. If we can conduct a MAC session, I've rewarded, I already gave you copies of the ilokano script for our Sangunyan Bayan session. So kindly go over and review the script, the ilokano script. So probably, if we can master the use of the ilokano script in our regular session, then we can use the ilokano language during our regular sessions, no? This is to, of course, to be more engaging with our viewers, with our listeners who may be watching or listening to our live stream sessions, no? And I gave you copies of the book, How to Handle Sessions, no? Although the title is misleading, no? But this is a simplified parliamentary guide for members of the Sangunyan Bayan. So it's a good read, it's a very quick read, it's a very quick read. So there are examples of ordinances or resolutions. This is very useful for the new members of the Sangunyan Bayan and a very useful guide, a refresher for the veteran or the returning members of the Sangunyan Bayan. So we will discuss the schedule of the MAC session using the ilokano script after our regular session. Thank you for reminding me, Sangunyan Bayan Member Biado. Any more announcements from the members of the Sangunyan Bayan? Okay, for the information of the members of the Sangunyan Bayan, last week, we received, we formally received to the, to the Sangunyan Bayan, 10 GIP, government interns. And we requested the Office of the Mayor to give us 10 GIPs because, for two reasons. Number one, the mayor, through an executive order, designated me as the head of the technical working group for the pre-ELA. And I requested 10 GIPs so that they can assist us. And I will be dividing the, I actually divided already the GIPs to help the members of the Sangunyan Bayan, including the two, the two, the two ex-official officers. They will help us in the conduct of our research and preparations for the pre-ELA. Okay, now, do not abuse our GIPs, huh? They are here to learn, they are here, they are here to observe the processes so that they can be better equipped just in case they will apply for a job, no? After their GIP stint. Okay, so since we divided the Sangunyan Bayan into various committees and in preparation of the ELA, we're still in the pre-ELA stage, but in preparation of the ELA, kindly coordinate with your concerned, our counterpart agencies or departments in the municipality and begin discussing items, no? That we can probably include in our ELA. I recommend that you get a copy of the last ELA of the municipality. I think that was 2019, the 2019 ELA. So you will have a baseline, no? You can do that on your own and after this week, supposed to be this week, may schedule tayo ng baseline reporting sana ng mga committees, no, ng mga departments. Ng adamat nakaschedule nga, trainings and workshops, the MPDO, the Treasurer, the Budget Officer, so handa nga makaatendar, so we will reschedule that. So without need of any official notice, So without need of any official notice, I am inviting you, yeah? If there are pre-ELA sessions, you need to attend, no need to wait for a notice. It is your obligation, it is your duty, okay? So any more announcements? If there are, yes, Sangunyan Bayan Member Umipe.
Uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, as a Committee on Transportation, here's also my members. ABC President Percy Balcarion, SBM David Biado, SBM Eugene Borja, and SBM Clay Formoso.
Thank you, Sangunyan Bayan Member Umipe. Uh, all committee chairpersons kindly provide the list to our Sangunyan Bayan secretary. And if you have new numbers, kindly update your new numbers and provide our SB secretary, kindly inform our SB secretary of any change, changes in your personal contact information. So if you have email addresses also, kindly provide her your email address so she can forward or email the order of business, no? Minimesenjer mo ba sa kanila?
No, sir.
No, okay. Minsan kasi, if you send the advanced copy to me, if I can remember it, or if I can make time or have time, I usually forward it. But I think I did not forward the order of business this time, no? Natulugak nga ta, when no hangko na panunutan nga ipadalan. Okay, any more announcements?
Mr. Presiding Officer.
Yes, Madam Sangunyan Bayan, I'm sorry, sir, Encarnita Delacueva.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Uh, just, I just would like to inform my colleagues that we will sit down our internal procedure after this week, after the seminar of Councilor Borja, Councilor Formoso, and Councilor Borgonio.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Uh, the Committee on Finance will be attending a local finance orientation and workshop together with the acting municipal treasurer and budget officer in Clark and the municipal assessor also, Clark or Subik Bayan? Oh, okay. Ang dengig gayo ah, keta duty updates ni mandana sa hangadaji sa balitobraan yungyay ah? I will be requesting, saan na charge, Office of the Sangunyan Bayan or Office of... The travel and the seminar fees were charged, OM? No, I think it was charged here. Okay. Ngam no SBT nakacharge na, I will require you to submit a written report. No, sa balitobraan yungyay? Okay, okay. Enough joking because I have to go to, I have to attend a consultation. So do we have any more announcements? Yes, Sangunyan Bayan Bilyones.
Sir, requesting to repair the manhole of the creek of Kabangaran due to the widening of national highway and the desilting of canal at the eastern part going to the manhole across. Because last typhoon, the water and the mud crosses along the national highway due to the small hole what's the crease.
There is a motion, there, okay. I hope there is no objection if we can tackle the new motion, the new proposed measure mentioned by Sangunyan Bayan Member Bilyones. If there is no objection, then we can include it in our agenda today. Okay, there is a motion from Sangunyan Bayan Member Bilyones to pass a resolution for the immediate repair of the manhole or at barangay Kabangaran. Do I hear a second?
Motion, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any other discussion? I will make an exception. Yes.
Sir, I have here a resolution coming from the office of the SK of barangay Banawang, sir. Can we consider it also?
You can discuss it, no? That's why I already mentioned last session. Uh, not everything that pops or pops into your mind, uh, we need to prepare the resolution, no? That's why we have an order of business so we can anticipate what to discuss during a specific regular session. But I will make an exception because that's an emergency and it may endanger life or property, okay? Uh, nonetheless, since the members of the Sangunyan Bay did not object to the inclusion of the proposed measure manifested or raised by Sangunyan Bayan Bilyones and hearing objection to the passage of the proposed measure, the motion to adopt and approve the proposed measure is hereby approved. Now as to the content you may discuss. Okay, any more announcements? Okay, no more. Ulitak lang ako ah. Uh, except for extreme cases, we will not include the discussion of other measures not included in our order of business, no? Uh, number one, so that amutay nu anyadi pagpapatangan ti may sang session. May kadwa tapno may sagana matlanga nalain, da yere resolution nga kaya't yo. Haan nga da yere ibagatay lang yere title. Ngam gat din ada la, ada papelan, ada lalaunin, ada justification, ada discussion, yere kaya't tayong resolution. Okay, there being no more agenda left in today's session. There is no more item left today in our agenda and if there is no objection from the members of the Sangunyan Bayan, I would like to declare this regular session adjourned, session adjourned. Good morning.